And everything's, right now, everything's downtown, downtown, downtown. Heck with anywhere else in the city. It's all about downtown and that's it. Nothing's getting done that needs to be done in other parts of town.
Yeah, and I agree. I think that there's been some good stuff done, but it's been so focused that we've got to expand it. And my thing that I don't understand, and you know, and I'm sure that's because I'm not privy to some of the conversations that they've had and made that brought up these decisions, is why are we developing downtown? We have Wonderland Park. We have Wonderland Park that's already a tourist attraction.
Oh, that one.
We have a built-in, already ready-to-go tourist attraction, have drive-in theater, which is rare, which is an attraction. We had the Thompson Pool. We have all these things already set up to bring in people, and we're building hotels downtown. That's something I don't, that's what I don't understand. We have things, you know, we have museums, we have, you know, we have things that we could have built up around and done things with those areas, and we're building downtown. And, you know, like I said, I'm not necessarily opposed to it, I just don't understand why it's been so focused there instead of, like you said, some of these other areas. I don't understand that at all. And I'd like to see more things done.
And they need people's opinion, the people should have a choice of whether they want it or not.
Yeah.
I agree.
Especially if the tax dollars...
If it's both, or whatever.
Well, and I'd like to see more of development by corporations and individuals and entities other than the city government. You know, because, because the more the city government is doing stuff, the more they're spending your tax dollars, the more tax dollars they're going to want from you. And, you know, that's, that's, there are things that private entities can take care of, and we don't need the city government to take care of. And so, you know, that's kind of where I'm at.
I agree with this lady right here in front with her rusty shirt color.
Me.
Right here, yeah. I mean, you know, we all pay our taxes and then spend it downtown, spend it downtown, spend it downtown. You know who's been doing that to us for years is Austin. They, they, they take all this tax money up here, and you know, we have a lot of property up here in the Panhandle, farmland, businesses, and they take our taxes, and what do they do? They build another loop around Dallas, or they build another loop around San Antonio, and what have we got? We don't even have a good second-class loop here. I mean, our loop here is...
We don't even have a complete loop.
Well, and we're still under construction.
So, if, if we don't like, if we don't like Austin doing it to us that way, why don't we turn around and do it to ourselves in Amarillo? I mean, I mean, come on, this isn't even a, this is not even close to a second-class loop around Amarillo. But you go to Lubbock and you got a first-class one. Those people fight for, hey, we pay taxes here, if you're going to build a loop, do us a good loop here. Well, it's the same thing, it's Amarillo. If you're going to take all, if you're going to tax all of us, let's quit spending it all downtown.
Especially if we want to bring in tourism and more jobs. Because that's one of the things, like I wondered, I would love to bring in more manufacturing jobs, jobs other than restaurant work. You know, I mean, we have lots of restaurants here, and that's great, but we need more jobs, because the kids are graduating high school, and maybe they go to college, or maybe they, maybe they go to college somewhere else, and then they don't come back. Because what are they going to do? Come here, go to work in a restaurant? I went, got a degree, let me work in a restaurant. Okay, well, there's Boeheim Copter, and it's fantastic, but they only need so many people. And there's only certain fields...
Oh, the work gets crazy.
Well, some of them will end up there, but that's not exactly...
No, 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 I mean, work's in the free, but don't forget that.
But I mean, you know, I, I think we need a more diverse group of employers. And I think that with, with I-40 and I-27, and we have railroad, and we have an airport, now, right, and it's not the biggest airport I've ever seen, but it's, it's still an airport that can do cargo. You know, and, and, and I, I just think that the reason, I think one of the reasons, well, there's a couple of reasons why, one of them is we haven't necessarily been catering to them to bring them in, but we also, you know, when, when people want to bring their company into a town, they don't just call up the mayor and say, hey, can we move there? They come to the town and they look and they see. And Amarillo, if, if you come and look, it's a little out of balance. It's not hard to drive around Amarillo for very long and figure out that it's just, things are just a little out of balance here. You know, and, and you drive through this part of town and the roads are great, then you go to this part of town, the roads aren't so great, and they're like, well, you know, most of my trucks can't go down Amarillo Boulevard with, you know, if I have, if I have a shipping company, we're going to tear that road up in no time. You know, and if, and, and that's kind of out away from downtown, and you don't want the manufacturing company to chunk right downtown, you want that kind of a little bit away more where, you know, where people can get to their jobs and stuff. You don't want, they don't want to compete with the traffic that, that is the daily business of the city, they want to be kind of out and about. And so, you know, the south side of town has to go through a lot of homes and all that, and that's fine, whatever they want to do, you know, but, but a warehouse, or a ma, or shipping, or manufacturing company doesn't want to chunk itself right there, they're more likely to put themselves kind of on the north side route in this part of town. We've got crime going everywhere, drive out of Boulevard, there's a bunch of prostitutes. Well, you know, they don't want to, they don't want to build their warehouse next to where there's much crime. So, I mean, it's, it, to getting these things to happen, there's a lot of things we need to address. It's not a, you know, you know, I'd like to think that if I got elected, I could go in here two years, turn around, but that's not realistic. There's a lot of things that I can do that can get us to that direction. You know, I can work towards that, I can work on reducing crime, I can work on lifting these neighborhoods up, you know, and, and work on the infrastructure and all that, but it's not, it's, it's, it's to the point that it is, it's probably going to take more than two years. You know, so, and I'm not saying that I'm trying to run for more than two years, because I don't even want to think that far ahead right now. But it behooves us to find other people that, let's say I win, and let's say in two years I don't run again, we need to find someone to come in and step in and take that place after me. So, so after this election is over and all this stuff, we need to talk to people in our community and find out who would be interested, who, who can we lift up, who can we push in the direction to, to step in and fill this spot? Because I stepped into this spot and, you know, I never thought I would. You know, I never thought I would be in this spot.
To kind of address that, the way things are kind of moving, I'm a precinct chair for Lurin County. If you're going to be involved in politics, you need to be involved with one party. It's good, it's getting to the point, if you're not going to be involved with the party, the parties aren't going to support you.
Well, especially here in Texas. Texas has its, has its setup to be a party.
About everything else, you got to be, we want people who, that we know are involved with Republican, for Democrat, don't matter, get involved with the party. Because if you're not involved with the party, it's going to be hard to get interest. Because I, I brought up our last two meetings in Lurin County about this city commission, and I said, well, we haven't heard from anybody. We don't know who's running, we don't know who's going to want it, and we're not going to come back. So, I mean, if you want to be involved with, in this part of the country, you better get involved with the parties. Just that simple.
Well, they have to stay informed of what's going on, too. You know, and that's, that's, that's part of our problem, is that people aren't being informed, be it because the information's not there, or be it because they're not seeing the information, whichever the reason is, there's, and I think there's a myriad of reasons for that, I don't think it's just one thing.
Lurin County has a website, and it's a pretty good website. I mean, I've seen some really bad ones. Our webmaster is a genius. He's, he's good.
That's good, that's good. Now, see, I live in Kansas, I have people in Kansas.
Yeah, I don't know if they're involved. I know Lurin County has. Lurin County, they, he does a pretty good job of keeping things on there that are current relevant. So, you know, the precinct chair, we're, with both, both Harley and Lurin County, the leadership is getting developed to where the precinct chair is going to be kind of the strong arms. You know, we're, I've, I've kind of been looking for people to support in the city, because I'm going to say, I'm 112, and it was, it's very big, I can walk it, you know, a couple of weekends pretty easy. But if I don't know you, I can't, I'm not even going to, those doors, I ain't voting for this person that I have no idea what they're running about. So, if you're going to run, we need people involved either for our appearance or...
Well, I'm just a regular voter, but if a candidate has not been involved in politics, I, to me, it's documentation that they really don't know how to handle. They can have all these idealistic ideas and all, I thought, government is a system, it's a system, and if they aren't involved in the party, they don't know how to handle it. They may be a nice person, they may be real smart, but they don't know how to handle it.
Something that hadn't been addressed here, that I've heard anywhere, that just breaks my heart. You, you've brought up several times this evening about bringing business to Amarillo. Well, I think most people, hey, that's great, and I, I agree with you, that's great, but we're on the verge of losing the American Quarter Horse Association. And they're fed up with Amarillo. So, why, why's, where's the city helping them? They don't, that's 200 jobs fixing to go to Fort Worth. And this is the only place, if you own a quarter horse in Russia, Zimbabwe, you name any place in the world, there's only one spot on this globe that you can register your quarter horse and get papers, a pedigree, and whatever all that means, is Amarillo, Texas. And we're about to lose it, and who cares? I hadn't heard anybody concerned about it.
I care.
I do, it breaks my heart, I don't own a horse, but I love animals. And I, I think I know what the issue is, you know, but then again, I don't know. But I haven't, I haven't heard of anybody, anywhere, you know, in any campaign or anything, and I know you can't fix it, you're just running for office, but why are we just going to let that just go away and say, bye-bye? Oh, well, y'all can keep the museum. Okay, the museum's great, I love it, but I want the headquarters, the world headquarters to stay here.
Yeah, it should.
And if you don't, even if you don't care about jobs, but it does involve about 200 jobs. So, now, do I have the answers to that? No, but it's concerning to me, is where in the world is, they just care about Hodge Town, Hodge Town, Hodge Town, let's bow down and worship the stupid thing. Okay, it's here whether I like it or not, but are we just going to let American Quarter Horse Association just walk away and not even say, well, we couldn't care less? You know, we're, we're working on getting new businesses here, but, I mean, we're, this is insane.
Take care of businesses that are already...
This is insane!
Do we know why they're considering leaving?
It's not my job, it's the leaders', I can't fix the problem.
You know what I'm saying, do we know why?
Well, right, nobody's told us, has anybody even asked them?
And I don't know why either, but I have heard that that's, that's an issue.
And I'll, I'll guess, let me just take a guess. Our, our, our great economic development people here give a million dollars to American Sparrow. I don't call it American Eagle. I call it a little old crummy sparrow to fly to Amarillo like that every year, but what do we give Southwest? You know, I mean, there's something, there's some inequities there. If we're going to give, that's, that's my taxpayer money that they're giving Am, you know, people, if people from all over the world want to come here, they don't want to have to ride a bicycle, or maybe they just don't like American Sparrow. But there is a first-class company that flies here, and do we pay them any money to come here? No, we just wait until they decide to come and take it at their own risk, but we're going to give a million dollars to American Sparrow if they'll keep coming here. And so, you know, that's a factor, is transportation. People from all over the world say, hey, we know where DFW is, so maybe, what, they could be, those people from all over the world could be saying to AQHA, why don't you get out of Amarillo and go to Fort Worth? But then the leaders in Amarillo, it looks like if you cared about the future of Amarillo would say, no sir, you're not leaving here, we're going to do whatever it takes to keep you here, because you're an important business here in this, in Amarillo. And, you know, and this Economic Development Center, I mean, they do some good things, but then they come up short, too. You know, they'll, they'll pay this company to come here with their 75 employees, and hey, that's great, but American Quarter Horse is already here with 200 employees that we're about to lose, and what's being done about that? Zero. So, I just wanted to point that out to you, because nobody at the city council is even thinking about it. Our big Hodge Town, or any, all those big money people downtown, it's just about their next parking garage, or the next baseball team, or the, or if we're going to have scooters or not, or some other high priority thing, just not a, not the world headquarters for the, you know, for the Quarter Horse Association. I mean, look, let's, let's talk about insanity for a while, there's too much of that here. Excuse me?
Well, and we, we need to focus on the businesses that are here. And, and, and you're right, I mean, I'd love to bring in more businesses, but we can't forget who's already here, because that's the staple of our economy, that we step on with what we have. You know, if we don't keep the businesses that we have, then what good is it to replace them all out anyway? We won't be Amarillo anymore. You know, Amarillo has a, has a, I mean, I've lived in several different places, and Amarillo has a unique feel to it, has a unique community, it has a uniqueness to it that you're not going to find anywhere else, and if we lose that, we'll never get it back. You know, and, and there's just something about Amarillo, I, I don't, can't even describe what it is necessarily, we could talk about, like you're talking about the American Quarter Horse Museum, we talk about, talk about tumblebeads, we can talk about all kinds of things, but there's a uniqueness to Amarillo. And we're in a great spot, we're, you know, where we're located, if we could get Amarillo to, to keep its, uh...
History.
Our history, but our, for lack of a better description, our feng shui, what makes us us.
Our personality, our individuality.
Our, our personality, and our city has a personality, exactly, that's a very good way to put it. And if we can keep that, not lose it, we don't want to lose that, if we can keep the, the personality of our town, and still develop and get other things, and, and bring the economy up, and get businesses in here, and raise up the businesses that we have, not just bring in other businesses, but raise it up, and we can make, and we're in a great location, we're the only city this size in the Panhandle of Texas. I want to make Amarillo the shitty, shining city, that did not come out right. The shiny city of the Panhandle that the rest of Texas can look at and say, look what those people up there did, look at that, they've turned Amarillo into this great town. And I want to go see what it is they've got. And when they come here, they're going to meet you, and you, and you, and you, and you, and you, and they're going to go, wow, this is what Amarillo is. And we'll still have our personality, we'll still have our feng shui, we'll still have the people that are here, and we can bring in more people and keep that. I don't want to, I mean, I'd love to bring in more people, but I don't want to bring in more people and them change us, I want to bring in more people and us change them. Because I'm staying, I've stayed in Amarillo for a reason, because I like this town. It gets under your skin, it's infectious. And so, I want to keep that.
Overall, the people are friendly.
And, and, and you know, when I first moved to Amarillo, the TV stations used to talk about how they're a big city with a small-town attitude, and I thought, well, that's really neat, I like that. And they don't say that anymore, and, and I feel like we're losing that feeling, you know, and, and being a big city can be great. I used to live in Louisville, Kentucky, and that's a huge, huge town, but it doesn't have that sense of, sense of community, that homey feeling, it doesn't have that. And, and I don't want, I don't want Amarillo to lose that. I want us to be able to come together, I want to have that sense of community, I want us, I want people in East Ridge to, to know the people in their city, I want them to come into town and shop, but I want them to have a grocery store out there, too. There's no McDonald's out there, they have to come all the way in here, by the time they get here, they can wrestle with the kids in the backseat long enough, they don't want to talk to the people in town, they want to get their kids fed and get back home.
Well, and for Amarillo Boulevard, we wouldn't have anything out there either.
Well, and, and it's really, there's a lot, a lot of people out there, there's actually quite a few people that live out there, and they have nothing. There's no grocery store, there's no Toot and Tot, there's no McDonald's, no Burger King, nothing. They've got, they've got the Thai House and a couple of small restaurants, and, and I think there's a Taylor's. There's no grocery store, there's no nothing.
Out in East Ridge, there's nothing there, probably.
I lived out there for, for a year, and I was, there's nothing here. Yeah, you have to come all the way into town to do anything. You know, and, and that's part of that out of balance that I see in our town, you know, and, and I'd like to, I'd like to get some things to happen out there, you know.
It was like Pleasant Valley, we have Dollar Generals and United Supermarkets. If it weren't for the Boulevard, having some places to eat, I mean, as much...
There's not much out here, yeah.
Which Walmart do you shop at?
Well, usually I go to Jim Lake Road, but I don't know where I go, it's going to be eight to 10 miles away.
Yeah.
And there's, there's, I know there's not much out, but Pleasant Valley's another place that just doesn't have a lot out there. It has the raceways out there, the back part.
Oh, they haven't done most of Randy Ransley in a long time.
They have, they're not as interested in them.
No.
I haven't been out there in a while, so...
Pleasant Valley has the atmosphere of, the country atmosphere, that's what they've got.
Yeah, they really do.
We are country in the city.
Yeah. That's why I always wanted to live out there.
I love it out there, I just absolutely love it out there. And it's very diverse, and then we have, oh my God, houses that should be condemned, but nobody does anything, nobody checks on Pleasant Valley, they don't care about Pleasant Valley. As I said, we're the stiff child. I don't care what it looks like out there.
It, it, it kind of seems like there are a lot of parts of town that has felt that way for a while now. You know, and, and I'm glad that we're getting these, these, these groups together that are working on places like the Barrio and North Heights, and, and starting on San Jacinto, and I think that's a good thing, but we have a lot more work to do.
I like that, you know, we can have animals out there, you know, cattle and sheep and stuff like that out there, and I love that, that you can do that. I mean, we just have dogs, because we can't have chickens or anything, because we have dogs, but, but a lot of people have cattle and stuff out there, and that's, it's a good thing. It's a good thing, okay? The ticks are really bad out there, but it's still a good thing. But, but there's just, I mean, there's just some absolute trashy dumps out there that I don't know how people can live like that.
There's trashy dumps all over town.
Yeah.
Well, not everywhere. There does seem, there does seem to be a lot of them, because, you know, and I know there's that brother in San Jacinto that did a lot of houses that are just, just run down, and...
Oh, yeah.
And there, there, we've got, we've got to get those things taken care of, and get, either get the homeowner on, on the ball, or, or get it condemned and get it cleared out. There's got, there's got to be, I mean, you know, there's got to be a way to get this, get this moving along and get things straightened out.
Because, you know, I don't want the city to control Pleasant Valley, well, you can't have cattle, you can't have chickens anymore. It's always been that way, and I don't want that to change.
Well, that would ruin the whole, the whole...
I mean, that's what it's about, Pleasant Valley, but it's just, there are some real dumps out there, literally trashed-out garbage dumps out there.
True, this is just a personal opinions on not blaming anyone else for it, but a lot of the things that people have, are concerned about, it seems to me, makes sense, if you think about, at least perhaps, there is an agenda that the city council is following, and it has nothing to do with the people. It, it's the agenda of the people that paid the money for them to be elected, that four-color slip paper printing that they did before, like, last city council election, they were all on there, and they were all elected, you know, everyone who was an incumbent was thrown out. Essentially, and I'm not accusing anyone, I'm just saying, you know, if you think, if people are saying, well, we can't get this, we can't get that, nobody has attention, they're not doing what's really best for our economy as a whole, it really fits if you think, okay, there's an agenda, and everybody in the, everybody in the council is basically paid by the people that have that agenda, and that's the agenda that they're following, and that's why they don't, don't listen to the people, they don't care.
Well, and, and it, I can't say whether that's factual or not.
I understand what she says.
But, but that goes back to the, the people, the people not feeling like their voice is heard, you know, that, and, and the things that are happening, like the Thompson Pool that no one was expecting, and, and it makes it easy to see that that might be the case if, if it's not the case. Now, if that is the case, then maybe it's just perception on the, on the part of the people, but, you know, I, I can't say whether that, that...
I know, I understand.
I can't really address that, you know.
I know, I understand, I agree with that.
But there's, there's, and, and keeping the communication open between the people and listening to the people when they say, look, we don't want that, you know, then you have to stop and say, well, maybe we need to rethink this, maybe we need to take some more time and, and, and look into this, instead of just doing it. You know, and, and so, and assuming that there is not that situation, it can still seem like that kind of situation if those things don't get communicated, and the lines aren't open between the people and the city.
And the trust is invalid.
And, and trust, trust is the most important factor in all of that, it really is. And if the people don't trust, trust their leaders, then there's a, there's a breakdown.
Some others feel like there's been a great deal that would cause us not to trust them.
I, I've actually heard that one once. So, I understand, I understand the sentiment.
Right, right, you don't have to agree. And no offense, but I didn't vote for any of them.
Yeah, and, and so, you know, and that's, that's, that's one of those things like we're talking about, there's a lot of things that we need to work on in Amarillo. And, and so, there's a lot of issues, there's a lot of, lot of hurt feelings, if, if we're lacking a better way of describing it, and a lot of emotion, raw emotion with some, some people, and some people are perfectly happy, you know, and I understand that, but the other people who aren't happy are really unhappy. And so, there, there's got to be some kind of fix, there's got, you know, whether, whether I get elected or not, if Rita gets, gets re-elected, then I hope that hearing this will help her to take this back to city council and say, we've got to fix this, we've got to address this, and we've got to make it better with the people.
Because I'm one of those that really didn't get involved in all this stuff, but I am just not, really not happy at all. So, I'm starting to get out into this stuff there, see what's going on, and hoping for changes.
Yeah, if you, if you start to be concerned about what's going on, you have to be involved, you can't just not vote, you know? We have to put ourselves out there.
Yeah.
Go to meetings there, listen, and speak up sometimes when it's not popular.
I'm going to say what I want to say.
I was so vocal...
I'm not going to be ugly about it, I'm just going to say what I want to say.
I was so vocal in my opposition to that baseball stadium.
But it didn't matter.
No.
It's already decided, there can be, no matter what.
And I guarantee you, they're not going to sell very many seats in that damn thing.
Oh, yeah, they will, why do we want it?
We couldn't fill Potter County Stadium up.
We've had five stadiums since 1907, none of them have made money, I don't want. So, why was, why is it...
It's because city Vam, people of Amarillo do not support...
We've got a football team, we've got a hockey team, they both have championship runs, and we can't even get a third of the citizens to fill. So, why, why are we going to pay $30 for a ticket to go watch a W-18 team when we can drive wherever that way to watch a Pro team, or six hours that way to watch the Rangers?
It's $30 a ticket.
Or five Houston to watch the Astros. Do I?
It's $30 a ticket?
$30 a ticket.
True, we used a word earlier about some things that have been mishandled, that's one of the things I think has been grossly mishandled.
If I'm going to spend $30 on a ticket, I'm going to go watch the Rangers.
Well, me, too.
I've got a brother that lives out there, I'm going to stay with him, we'll go watch the Rangers game, go watch the Astros, we don't want them for a while, you know? Sorry, I'm, I'm harsh with the Astros.
I would like the Astros.
You know, but why would you do that? Why would you pay $30 most to watch a triple A double A team? Because then you don't have...
Well, just, just, just suppose maybe the members of the AQHA who are all over the world, all over this globe, and the headquarters is here, and they're complaining and saying, get this moved to that DFW, that's a major airport in the world, in America and in the world, move to Fort Worth. Well, listen, we've got to stop that. And the transportation here between Dallas, between DF, or, you know, the Metroplex and here has not been good for a long time. So, you know, there's all kinds of things that could be done. The city could run a shuttle, you know, for these AQHA people between here and there, free, hey, we want you to come to Amarillo, we want the headquarters to stay here. There's something different could be done with paying a million dollars to Southwest and not just to American Sparrow. Things could be done to improve the transportation, whether we ran a private shuttle, or we could find a little small airline, you know, maybe we hadn't even heard of it, but there, you know, it'll cost money, but it saves, it helps Amarillo, and it saves jobs, and it keeps the AQHA here, and if they care about it half as much as I do. And so, things like that, sure, it'll cost some money, but just about everything does. But there's, there's ways to help these people that are perturbed about the transportation between the Metroplex and Amarillo. And I'm, you know, I know a lot of... And, uh, I'm, you know, I know a lot of people that are unhappy about that, that don't belong to the AQHA. So, but we could especially help them to help, and in the process, help the QH, AQHA take the pressure off them, say, hey, okay now, the city's helping y'all, so take pressure, I'm just guessing, this is all speculation, but quit putting pressure on us, therefore you don't need to press, put pressure on us to move to Fort Worth. There, there's, there's solutions to these things, but we gotta talk about them, we gotta look at them, and, and are, are we, are we just gonna wait till they move to Amarillo and say, what can we do to get them back? Forget it.
Yeah, there's a way then.
It's too late then.
When I was, uh, in high school and out, and it's been a long time ago, the Quarter Horse was the major employer for, like, young ladies that had gone to the secretarial, uh, area of, of high school. They hired, that's just where girls worked. You know, they started there, and then they moved on. There was another, I think it was the Amarillo Quayle Bureau was another one that was a major employer of kids just starting out.
Well, I had a friend that worked there. Actually, she's out in high, well, while she's in high school, I think she started there. Yeah. She's real disappointed.
I hope we don't lose it, that would, that would break our heart too.
Well, and, and not, not only, like, the jobs and everything you've talked about, but it's quintessentially Texas. You know, and, and, and that's another one of those things that, that helps us have our identity as a city, is, is the Quarter Horse.
You know, if we didn't have I-40 and weren't part of Route 66, we would not be in good shape at all.
We'd not even exist.
Yeah. Because that's, because, you know, a lot of foreigners come here and they do Route 66, that brings a lot of business through here and stuff. They don't necessarily stay here, but, and it depends on their schedule.
Yeah.
They get a planned out schedule, and they follow it. And if I see them on Sixth Street, I say, you need to go to Powell Derr Canyon. You can't miss Powell, I don't care if it's not on Route 66, you better go to Powell Derr Canyon. But Powell Derr Canyon's a big draw too, you know.
For a while, I lived in an RV, and I, I parked it out at the Amarillo Ranch out there by Big Jackson. And it was, I worked in the office some too. It was amazing to me how many people came here to go to Powell Derr Canyon. I mean, they came from Denmark, all over the world, they wanted to see the canyon.
They come all over the world to do Route 66, starting Chicago or wherever, rent a car, whatever they do, and then travel all the way to California.
A lot of them will rent an RV.
Yeah.
And pick it up at one of the coast, you know, cities and drive it across Route 66.
You know, we, we, we have some, some naturally built-in attractions.
Yes.
You know, so, I mean, it, it's, it's important, that's why I'm saying it's important for us to, to get these things taken care of as far as, like, improving the city to the point that people want to come here. And, and, because we can have more things here that they can do, because maybe they go to Powell Derr Canyon, and they're tired and they wanna go back the next day, and then we're gonna go for a second day or whatever, and they wanna, they wanna sit here in town and do something. The kids are restless, they wanna take them somewhere, they take them to Waterland Park. You know, or they take them wherever, you know, and, and, but at the same time, we can't forget about the people that are here.
Right.
You know, it, it's great to have people coming in, and it's great to get that revenue and the hot tax and the, and the whatevers that come with that. But we've got people that live here we can't forget about.
Right.
You know, businesses that are already here that we, we can take care of, and, and like the, the Quarter Horse Museum, we need to keep that, that's something that'd be great.
I mean, it's a draw, I mean, we have to have the draw at Amarillo, or we won't be here.
Yeah, definitely.
I mean, that is the draw at Amarillo. And isn't there one of the rodeos that may not come here anymore?
I, I just heard a little bit about that.
Was it the World Championship Rodeo or something?
WRCA?
Was it the WRCA?
Working Ranch Cowboys Association.
They're not coming back?
They're not coming back? Or is that just a rumor that they're not?
Is that the one that may not come back?
That's what I've heard.
Yeah, okay.
See, I think I'd heard, heard it as a, a, a little something, but not enough to even say that I'd heard it, you know.
Yeah. I remember hearing something about it.
Most rodeos, when they come to town, they spend a lot of.
And they bring people to town.
Well, that's, that's, that's like the, the, things like that that people are interested in is what we need to, to keep and grow and, and, and have happening. So, uh, yeah, the, rodeos are almost a dying thing, they're, they don't seem to be as popular now, which I don't think so.
I don't think rodeos are there.
Well, they'll never go completely away, but.
I reported six of them in Amarillo last year, in Amarillo.
Wow.
Well, I'm thinking.
Six of them.
Nationwide, because people, I have family that live in other places and they don't go to rodeos.
Oh, they're not by the statewide.
They're not Texas. We're, we're in Amarillo.
From Georgia to Nevada.
They're still very popular.
Extremely popular. We have equestrians, sporting events.
So many rodeos.
Every weekend in Amarillo, we have a world championship for, uh, team pinning competition that'll be here in Amarillo next week. They'll have about four hundred competitors. We had, um, the, uh, world finals, uh, you know, world, world final, uh, pinning championship. We've had a world final mounted cowboy shooting championship here in Amarillo. They had almost eight hundred people that came from out of town.
Yeah.
And stayed a week.
Was the shooting at, uh, the Amarillo Center?
Yes.
Yeah, because I went to it one year.
We had the national finals junior bull riding competition in Amarillo. And there was hardly anybody in the stands at any of these things. That's one reason I decided I would start up a YouTube channel called Amarillo Chronicles to wake people in Amarillo up to all of this stuff that is absolutely free. There's no admission charge, free parking.
Yes.
Great entertainment.
At the Amarillo National Center.
The kids love it, beautiful horses.
You have to get on their, you have to get on their site or their Facebook page, I don't really know, they have a Facebook.
With the amount of money that these things bring into Amarillo, far, far outspent, or, uh, bringing more money than that baseball stadium will.
Yeah.
Most of the people who are gonna pay that thirty dollars a ticket, they're Amarillo people.
Yeah.
Just collecting money from our own people. We need more money coming in from the outside. Jerry Hodge at the very beginning was totally adamant about not having a stadium like that. Um, for that, that very reason, you're gonna draw people locally, but as far as out, from out of town, we need more out of town.
Nobody's gonna drive to go see the team.
No. If they're gonna drive to see baseball, they're gonna go to Arlington and watch the Rangers.
Yeah.
And, um, one of our competitors is right there in Frisco, the Rough Riders. So if you wanna go see a double eighteen, you've got them right there too.
Where?
Um, Frisco, the Rough Riders.
Frisco?
They're one of our, they're in our league.
Where's Frisco?
It's.
I mean, it's in the Dallas area, it's around.
They are, they are the Rangers double A three. So, you know, you'll watch a guy that's gonna go make it to the Rangers.
So, did you hear about the, is it the WRCA that may not come back?
Yes, and they are the single largest.
Yes.
Annual event.
Yes.
In Amarillo, Texas.
They draw a lot of people.
Has been for twenty-three years.
You need to have some people from Amarillo to go contact those people and, you know, convince them.
The headquarters is here in Amarillo. It was established by Amarillo people primarily.
And I'd be happy to talk to anyone after Ms. Harper's town hall meeting, because this is her meeting, and I certainly did not want to interject. So, I'd be happy to provide some of those answers.
Oh, okay. Well, I, I appreciate that, you know, because I know, I know that, you know, things that I don't, and, and so.
I just came to listen, that was it.
Well, I, I understand, but I appreciate that you wanna talk to people, because that's what we need. And so, you know, I do appreciate that, and, and, and like I said, you know, this election is, is, is what it is, and, and whether I win or she wins, I hope that, that when we get in there, whichever one of us it is, that we remember the voice of the people, that we remember what the people want, and what the people talk about, and the things that we bring up. You know, because that, that's what matters, is we need, we need to make sure that, that we're paying attention to the people. I don't know, does anyone have anything else?
The WRCA, I would count that as Amarillo history. Cowboys are very much a part of the history of this part of Texas. And, uh, and they're, they're critical to our history, but they're also critical to, to today. I mean, there's people out there today, we know somebody, Lola works with a lady and her husband is a cowboy, and he manages or owns, it doesn't make any difference to me, ten thousand acres near Masterson. And I don't know how many had a cattle, that he, uh, gets on a horse and watches, checks on, manages. And so, you know, he's a cowboy, he's the owner, he's the manager, he's, but he's also a cowboy, that's, I, I mean, it, it, it came, he probably couldn't afford to hire someone, he's the cowboy. He is the guy that does the down and dirty, everyday work. You know, he's at the bottom, the cowboy's the one that takes care of, you know, branding, feeding.
Doctoring his kids.
You know, uh, castrating the new bowls that he wants to make into a sphere, uh, helping the, the heifers give birth to their first, you know, it's the everyday work. I know, I grew up on a farm, and my dad had cattle. And so, he's a cowboy every day in the process of caring for his property, owned or rented, it doesn't make any difference. But cowboys are who we, are our history here, uh, from, you know, from way back. And they're still a critical part of who we are today, cowboys. And the World Ranch Cowboy Association is a cowboy. You have to be, you have to be one of those, or you can't enter that rodeo. You have to be working, you have to be something like a full-time worker on a ranch, taking care of cattle, or you can't even enter that rodeo. It's not professionals, you know, that have a lot of money, and, and that's nothing wrong with that either. But these guys have to be full-time cowboys to even enter the rodeo. So these are not, there's nothing fake about these guys. Uh, they're, they're the people that do it every day, and not just for, uh, you know, to get attention and get their name in the paper. So that's, I think that's, somehow, I love Amarillo, I've lived here about half of my life or more, and that's a part of who we are in the panhandle, in the Amarillo area.
Exactly.
And so, that's important, I think that should be important to us. Now, sure, there used to be cowboys in Fort Worth, but I'd, I'd move to Fort Worth, or maybe they got a big, whatever, I, you know, that's my heart, I'd like to see them stay.
Yeah, I, I agree, I agree, I'd very much like to see them.
They'd move to Stevensville.
Well, is it, is, I, I, I don't, I mean, I wanted to hear from y'all, so I, I'm more interested in the issues you have. I could talk about anything all that, but I don't know if y'all had any more issues or anything else you wanted to, to cover, or?
I can't think of anything else off the top of my head, I just, I want changes, I want changes to better our city, not to make it harder on the citizens.
Um, well, it, it's, it, you know, I've had people ask me, uh, years ago, if I would ever consider running for office, and I said no. And, and then this, this thing had, came up with when I was, the guy tried to pick me up and said, prostitute, and I'm like, wait a minute, this is not okay. You know, and, um, and, you know, having, having, having gotten into talking, following politics more closely than just a passive interest during the presidential elections, um, I, I've kind of followed politics casually since regular elected. Uh, I've gotten more involved, uh, when the last president, the last two, well, I didn't follow Bush as closely. Uh, nine eleven got my attention, so I started watching a little bit more closely than I had previously. Uh, and then, and then Obama came in office, and I was interested in the stuff that he was doing, and, and, not interested in some of the stuff that he was doing, and, and had some pretty strong opinions about some of that stuff, and, and it got me kind of going and arguing with people on Facebook and all that kind of stuff that comes with it, a little bit of activism, and, and then I got out of the activism, and I started writing, and, and then that's when the stuff, the, the crime thing happened, and, and going to city council meetings and see the tabs getting changed around, and not being able to communicate, and it seemed like everyone that, that I knew that had any kind of conversation about what this direction the city was going was kind of not favorable. And, uh, and, and my daughter moved away, and I was, her husband has a pretty good job, and I was like, well, I'd love for you to come back to Amarillo, but there's just not really much opportunity there. There's not anything, you know, and so it's just, it's a culmination of, of things. And, and then when this election started coming up, and, and, and the conversation kind of came up again, and people, people had encouraged me to run, and I thought, well, you know, maybe it's time.
Why not?
And so I stuck my toe in the water, and here I am. So, you know, and, and, you know, we're willing, I'll either learn something or learn something.
Learn something, for sure.
So, uh, and, and, you know, I've got my hat and ring, and I'd like to win, I'd like to be able to try to get Amarillo to, to be the town that I know it can be, and, and if not, maybe nothing else, I can encourage the rest of the city council to remember that there's people out here that have different opinions, that need to be heard.
I appreciate your running, thank you. Whether you win or lose, I believe you won, and then, you know, competition is good. I believe it's good for Mrs. Powell or any of us to have competi, competition. It brings the best out of us, because if we don't have any competition, then we're not, if we're not challenged, then we don't have to, there's not a motive to wanna improve ourselves. And I believe Mrs. Powell is like, uh, like a lot of, of most of us, we wanna do better, and we don't, competition, I believe competition can be good for any, uh, anybody. So, you know, for, anyway, but thank you for running, and thank you for.
Well, and, and like anything, to grow, you have to, you have to struggle through something. And if you, and if you don't have, like you're talking about the competition, you don't have that struggle. And, and so, you know, even the seed struggles through that other ground, so, uh, you know, the, the struggling is important. And, and, you know, I, I have, I have nothing against Ms. Powell, I, I think she seems like a perfectly wonderful lady, and, uh, you know, I wish her as much luck as I wish myself luck on winning, and, and, you know, and just, I just want the people to, people's voice to be heard, and the people's will to, to be the governing direction for the city.
And the Phillies, me too.
I'll try to treat her that I would love to serve on the city council, but I would not campaign for anything. Not.
It's like a full-time job, so.
Yeah. And I've got my flyer back there, if y'all wanna have one, it's got my contact information on it. If you think of something else you wanna talk about, or bring up, or yell at before, I, I even more than welcome to send an email. Just don't call me two o'clock in the morning, breathing heavy, I might not respond very well. Thank you all for coming, we appreciate it.